You are all set.
Thank you, Lauren. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Anna Reynolds School of Project Building Committee, January sixteenth. It's a regular meeting. It is five seventeen. Lauren, can you do the roll before you leave us?
Yep, Chairman Woods.
Here.
Carol Duggan.
Here.
Kim Rada.
Here.
And Jeremy Wetzl.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next item is public participation. And we'll look quick, but nobody in there. Next item is take action on prior meeting minutes. We have one for January second, two thousand and twenty-five. Someone would like to make a motion to approve those minutes as written?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Carol. In a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Jennifer, architects update.
Okay. Good evening. So our, our design activity is still the same. We are so close with all the closeout documents. There's a few I just received from our mechanical engineer that I'll be reviewing and sending back. There's very few items left for closeout documentation. But we're doing that, reviewing any PCOS, which there are a few tonight. And the applications for payment, and there's one tonight. The potential change orders, we reviewed the three that, that Rich will go over later. That result net is a credit back to the project, and we do recommend those for your approval. And also recommend the application for payment number thirty for your approval tonight. And that's it. Are there any questions?
Anybody have a question for Jennifer?
No, just the comments. Sorry, I'm late. I just got in.
Oh, no problem, Dave. Go ahead. You're muted, Dave.
I didn't, I, I don't have a question. Just want to let you know I just got here.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Move on then. Owners, project manager update and financial update. They're both by Eileen. Welcome. Oh, you're muted too, Eileen.
Good evening. All right, so we've been staying, no news is good news so far, so things have been on the quieter side, a lot of closeout work, like Jennifer stated. Just going through the TCRs, this pay up, the budget, Steve and I have been talking, Lou and I have been talking. Like I said, haven't heard from Jennifer's, I'm, I'm sorry, from, from Jason, so hoping that that's good news. And I guess we'll just go through the financial update, and let me just share my screen with you. All right, Steve, I tried to keep this blown up, so can you see this all right?
Yeah, I can see it.
All right, so I'm just gonna start here with a little bit of detail. In the earlier meeting, twelve nineteen, we had gone through several additional items to add, which were the Sonatrol courtyard. I, I believe it's not the drawings. I, I think it's the cameras, actually.
I believe you're right. It is drawings. I mean, excuse me, it is the cameras.
Cameras. I'll correct that. The UPS battery backup, I, I do have a quote for that, and I think it came in a little bit under twenty-five hundred dollars. The furniture quotes, I still need to follow up with Jason and just get those in, I believe. I'll have to see. Hopefully Craig has the purchase order for these and has already ordered them, so quantity of twenty. Final painting, we also have the invoice for that tonight that came through. And then Steve and I went through. We transferred remaining funds from different categories that were remaining and left. So in the owner's contingency, now we moved these additional items over. So remaining in owner's contingency is three oh four, six fifty-four, and that is with these items deducted. So I'll quickly go through the budget summary. We're nearly complete with architect, owners rep. These other items are, are closed out. We have a little bit left for IES, who is still completing the commissioning, HVAC. Other costs, I reopen this because that's where I put the new purchase orders that were issued. And we have just a little bit remaining in FFNE and technology. Just waiting for all the closing documents to come in. And the construction costs. So that is where, where we're at, and again, owner's contingency is at three oh four, six fifty-four, seventy-one. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, Eileen? Doesn't look that way. Thanks, Eileen. Construction managers update. Rich, I know you got a couple of things for us.
Yeah, we've been, like Jennifer had said earlier, the final closeout documents are getting towards the end there. Last few things that we're collecting, once they go through, design team review, everything gets to the subcontractors. They're providing hard copy binders and flash drives of the manuals and the warranties for turnover, so we're collecting those at our office now. Once we get all those assembled, we'll, we'll meet with the owner to do a turnover of that at the school, so they have all that information for their records and any use in the future. Continuing with the financial closeout on the pay app, we've got a half dozen or so contractors left to close out. We're just finishing up. Some of these PCOS for tonight are helping with that, with just final adjustments to contract prices and closing out any allowances that are left. So we're doing, we got a big push to close everything out that we can in the month of January. So we're working on that the next couple of weeks, and in the actual onsite work, actually more programming side, which is being done remotely, is with heating commissioning is ongoing. They're going through between the commissioning agent and the HVAC contractor, checking sensors, checking the displays in the BMS system and making any adjustments that are left in there. There's a couple of sensors that need to be calibrated. They're gonna probably be out there middle of next week to do that work with the electrician, but again, what Eileen had said before, kind of no news is good news as far as any thing we're hearing from the end users on the functionality of it, so it's, it's got a few bugs that are just getting worked out of it, more on the display side and how everything's reading, so it, it's definitely getting close and wrapping up there, but we're pushing for final commissioning to get done as soon as possible with that commissioning agent. Do you want to move on to?
Yeah, we'll move right into the potential change orders. I know, really, I think it's one, right?
Yeah, there's, there's one for allowance coming back. That's a credit of forty-two hundred dollars for Saturday time. We did not use with the metal panels contractor. PCO number two ninety-three is backcharged, so it's a transfer money between the demo contractor, the roofing contractor, to provide some additional flashings. So that is some work that's gonna have to get scheduled out there to cover up a couple of conditions on the first phase roof that are, we, we need to make, cover it up, ASI eighty-one gave the direction for that. And PCO number two ninety-four, for the painting contractor and the tile carpet contractor, they've had change orders throughout the project, so they had a bond cost increase. So between the two of them, they had a seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, sixty cents worth of increased bond. So those are the last two, you know, change orders, so those two contracts finalize them and get all financial closeout with them. Not all the contractors are gonna have a bond increase. So these, these are the only two we have so far, and I, I've not been made aware of anyone else going after an increase in their bond costs yet, so nothing anticipated at this time.
Okay, thanks, Rich. That entertaining motion, and we approve PCO two ninety-two, two ninety-three, and two ninety-four in the amount of credit back to the project of three thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty cents.
So moved.
Thank you. The second by Carol. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Eileen, there's no invoices, is there?
There is one. I have it here. Okay, so it's, yeah, it's the painting for Caesar.
Oh, okay.
So this was one of the items that was approved for nineteen thousand, nine hundred. And the invoice is here. Oh, sorry. Everyone see that all right?
I can see white.
What is sharing? About now.
No, he hasn't really changed.
I can see it.
I mean, I could see it. I just, there we go. Now I can read it.
Okay.
So we need a motion to approve this, correct?
Yes.
So I would entertain a motion that we approve this invoice for nineteen thousand, nine hundred dollars by, go back to the top, painter?
It's Greg, Greg J. Caesar.
Oh, Greg J. Caesar Painting Company? Somebody like, thank you, Kim, right? Second by Carol. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. That's all you have, right?
That's all I have, yes. And then Rich has that. Well, can you see this? Rich, do you want to just?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna do that next.
Okay.
Any other business partners committee, which I know we have? Payment app thirty, thirty, right?
Yes. Want me to stop sharing, Rich?
No, you can share. It'll be the same screen. Yeah, payment app thirty for, it's two hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy cents.
So somebody like to move that motion forward?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. A second?
Good.
Thank you, Carol. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The other, other thing we have in other business partners committee, we had the discussion about the athletic field out. Like, it's actually, I guess it would be the rear of the school, but as most people see it, it's the front of the school from Fen Road. I sent out that to the committee. I know Lawrence sent out another copy. Did everybody get it? Okay, so it would cost the project seventy-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. So it's seventy-five thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars for the infield mix. Fifty thousand dollars for the irrigation system, forty-five hundred hours with another quote in there from Aqua Flow, does almost all the work for the town to bring the water line outside of the building, so the irrigation contractor can tie into it. Also, there's another letter from Clay, who's the head of Parks, not Parks and Rec, but Parks, supervisor of Parks and Grounds. He's estimating around thirty thousand dollars of in-kind services for their part of it. I forgot, I, I had a quote that I shared with you, which was a little bit higher. They don't charge off their equipment in here, so that's pure labor cost. Again, I'm thinking as a contractor, so we always have equipment costs. So if the committee is okay with it, how would it entertain a motion? That we transfer seventy-nine thousand, five hundred dollars over to Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec would oversee this entire project from start to finish, and our portion of it is at seventy-nine five. What's your pleasure? Carol?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. In a second.
Can I just have a question? Can I ask a question on this?
Sure.
Is this gonna allow the town to use this as, you know, one of the Little League fields? I mean, is this the, you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
So a, as with all of the fields on school property, the school obviously has control of it during the day, but at night it'll turn back over to Parks and the, I could tell you this, I know that the Little League is very excited. We don't have many fields on that end of the town, so it's really good. I think that we're able to provide this. Now they'll have two fields over there. I think it's a, well, it's an eyesore for one, but it's gonna definitely help our program both internally, as the educational program goes, for recess and expand our Parks and Rec Little League program into it. So again, I think this is a win-win, and everybody's buying into it, so.
I think as long as it gets used, you know, that's the greatest thing. If they're gonna use it, that old field was never, probably because it was in rotten condition, but it was never utilized that much as far as I could tell, so.
I don't remember the last time, Jeremy. Yeah, I don't remember the last time it was used. The other one does, the one that's a little bit north, they use that. But they don't use this one. But now they will. This will probably become one of their premier fields.
Awesome.
So we have a motion to, I get a second?
Second.
Second by Kim. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Public participation. And we still have no one from the public. Any comments by members before we adjourn? Yes, Jeremy?
One other thing, did we ever get a quote on the lighting for the backside of the building, I imagine? I don't know if that got through or whatever. I, I was driving by Patterson last night, and I really like what's been done over there. Yeah, I mean, the whole place is a little really, really nice. I mean, I, I'm not sure the cost of all that, but they look like LED lights, and I think that would be great for Anna Reynolds and probably all the schools at some point, if, if the guy had been working in it. It's a, it's a great thing to have that at night. I don't know if there's much incident at schools at night, but I, I like the way Patterson was done. That looks really nice.
Lou, could you speak to that? Did you, and again, Bryce?
I have worked on it with both our electrician and the contractor who would be helping us with it. I haven't gotten the proposal back yet, so next couple of days. Kind of busy on budget the last week and a half or so. So that's still open on my side.
All right, so if you can get it to us by the next meeting, that'd be great. I can't imagine it's gonna be very much money, so.
Right, most of the locations were, all we had to do was extend existing electrical. We didn't have to do any home runs for anything.
Okay, and Jerry, we have the money to do it, so I'm sure once he gets that quote, we'll be able to move it forward for you, okay? Anyone else? Carol?
Oh, I just wanted to comment on the field. I'm really happy that we approved it. The wellness teacher uses that field whenever the weather is, when we have good weather. He's always taking classes out there, so it'll be really nice for them to have a a quality field to play on. So thanks, everyone.
Good. Eileen, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind you, I didn't know if we wanted to talk about this tonight, but the nine thousand, five hundred for let's see, the courtyard security upgrades proposal.
Yeah, Lou, are you ready to talk about that yet? Have you had a chance to review those two proposals?
Well, we, we can impose on Jennifer, kind of talk through it. What I haven't had a chance to do yet is determine where, you know, I need to pick up the work with our own you know, contracting for the, obviously for the pathways, but whatever else there is that are you know, known buys, like we have to buy the door that goes in the side of the the media center room thirty-three, and I just didn't have a chance to go through and really scope it out here. So outside of those two, are there any other things I need to do, Jen?
Um, I mean, there's a lot of pieces that are touched in that. There's the, there's the new door and modification of framing. I, I don't know what contractors you're looking at, but but they'll have to deal with that, the hardware for the door, obviously. There's masonry involved, because this door is going into into a masonry wall, so there's a little bit of, I mean, not a lot, but there is some, some brickwork at the jams where that opening will be created. That also affects the inside. There's some concrete block on the inside of that room, so just right where the door is, where that's gonna be cut and connect. You know, eight inches on either side of the, of the wall at least are going to need to be touched. Our, so what we had proposed was, we had a son of a proposal over for ninety-five hundred dollars, which included our drawings for for the, the door, what the details would be, what the elevation and the size of, of the door and the modified window that's there now. So the details to get that down, done, we have a hardware consultant that helps with specifying the hardware. So we would give you what hardware would be appropriate for that location. We have our security consultant. He would indicate what is gonna be required at that door for access control, which would then be picked up by Sonatrol, I believe, in your case. As far as the actual getting the equipment and installing. We also have in that ninety-five hundred, the electrical engineer that we worked with for the, the full project. He has a little bit of time to to have the drawings to put a new switch at the inside of that door, a light switch to revise lighting controls, and just pretty much on a drawing, give direction for an electrician to do that work. I mean, I suppose you could do without a light switch on the inside of that door. That might be a little weird. But
Once it's cut in on the exterior, in your in your design, you have a light over that pad where the door opens. Okay.
Yeah, yep. Um, so they would, they would have, we have a, we'd probably use the same light selection that we had on the main project. Not that you have to necessarily use that light, but that's what he would, that's what he would specify. So, you know, so he'd mark down what, you know, what switching is, all the tie-ins for that conduit back boxes that are required. And then our landscape architect Brennan White, he would make sure that whatever path or paths that you want to connect to that door and concrete door pad that all the grades would work out so that it's an accessible access route from like the play area in the center to get to that door. Which shouldn't be too difficult to make it accessible. It's, that part of the courtyard is you know, relatively flat enough, but he, he checks grades, he'll be doing drawings and indicate what the sidewalk section should be. We still have to discuss with you on whether you want it to be asphalt or concrete. Likely, I'm, I'm thinking because of what you have out there now, that you'd probably do asphalt and then make it to a concrete pad at the door. But he would do the drawings for that. So our proposal is to do those drawings, so that we have the design, and then you would hand it over. We don't, we're not including, just based on our conversations, we aren't including doing like a full bid package with specifications and writing out an invitation to bid and all of that kind of stuff. We're trying to turn over the drawings to you. We will sign and stamp them, because technically these should have a building permit involved, because of the extent of the work, so we will sign and, and stamp those drawings. And I didn't include in the proposal, but I, I had a feeling that you know, if you're going for a building permit, and then the building official would need some statement from us saying that it's built, you know, to the design or something. If they need something like that, we certainly would, would visit to make sure that's the case. But we didn't include full construction administration services like we did for the full project, which means we don't anticipate this being a situation where we're getting submittals from contractors for review. We had talked about that, Lou, so we're, we're handing it over. You can get pricing from somebody, but you'll get the pricing. And you'll administer that contract and see what's going on, is what we anticipated. And if that's a concern, then, you know, we can talk more about it, but, but that's how I interpreted what was going to be required of us.
Yeah, the only thing in listening that I was not concerned about it, but if there's any unique aspects to it would be on the submittals, that of materials selected that you have compared to what I might see coming through directly the first time. I'm, if I could ask you to just even send me a email, you know, if we wanted you guys to just do the submittal review, so we have, we're insured to have an exactly the same product match. You know, what would that be to add to the ninety-five hundred?
Right, yeah, I can, sure, I can check that out. Other option that I did put in the proposal, I did include our hourly rates, so, and, and mentioned that if you needed services such as contract, construction, contract administration services, like reviewing submittals, like going out there on site and talking to the contractors, reviewing stuff while they're doing it, whatever, that we can, we also could bill that as an hourly, you know, on an hourly basis as well. You, you know, you might, I don't know how much of it you're gonna need. I don't know who you're going to work with, and if they're going to be wanting to send you, is this hardware okay, and sending us the hardware, and I, I don't, you know, I don't really know what to anticipate, just because of the nature of it being a small project.
Right.
Such as it is, you know, it's pretty tiny. I could give you a not to exceed number perhaps, and, and we could also do hourly.
Okay, that'd be fine. Yeah, that's the, that'd be, you know, other, you know, with that little potential adjustment, I would be fine saying this is ready to go from my standpoint, because we have all the key elements covered. We fully intend to match everything that's there exactly. And, you know, the, we know it's a very achievable ADA project because of the existing conditions that are there, so it's really the cutting in the door, pulling out the existing window and frame, putting in the new set, whatever destructive elements got touched, get patched up, and, you know, we have the Sonatrol on the around that door area, plus what's inside on that particular part of the work. And the minor adjustments for
And the minor adjustments for switching for the lights and the doors. So it's not a big, big deal. Okay, so if you wanted to. You know, present this, you know. It's fine, I don't know if you've, I had the opportunity to share this with the whole committee for the proposal, or if you wanted to do that or. Just have a go for it, but you know, I can certainly work with this.
If we did it the next meeting, would you have your pricing for the rest of the work at that point, you think?
Yeah. Well, I wouldn't have the. Yeah, I, I need the drawings. So I couldn't, I could spitball it, but I couldn't, you know, be close.
Okay, what's the committee's pleasure? I'm assuming, let's back up. What is the reason for this? This is for emergency egress?
Yes, this is not code egress for fire. Evacuation purposes. This is in the event of having a. Active shooter or some other, you know, intrusion to the school where we want to. Be able to get kids out of the courtyard to some safe haven.
And the safe haven be the media center, correct?
Correct, right. You have the two doors into the hallway, either side of the media center. You have the one doorway that comes up to the edge of the lobby. But there's a lot of space in there, which is depending on where. You know, an incident starts. Individuals will be cut off from. Different spaces, so we want to provide something else for. You know, the egress part, and Mike Morgan, our, you know, safety director. Is just fine with, you know, doing this one area for the media center. You know, addressing this issue.
And one more question, Jennifer, on the, the door itself, would it need to be an overhang on that door? Or no?
There wouldn't need to be an overhang on that door. But if that's something that the owner wants, we could do that too. But it's not used as, again, emergency egress. Nobody is exiting the media center. Through the, through the courtyard. We don't need to protect that. That, that pad outside of the door. Yeah, so an overhang isn't required, but if for some reason that's desired, we could include that in.
And I'm assuming that walkway on the east side is ADA accessible? Are all the walkways?
Those, they are. Those dash lines are indicating, you know, where it's accessible, but everything in there is. I think there's a desire not to bring students back into corridors, which are not protected. The, the kids are somewhat protected in the courtyard in a way that, that that's locked off. And then to take them into corridors, I think that wasn't desirable. And they wanted to take them into a space. That, that had protection. So that's why that room thirty three area was, was looked at by the district.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of the committee? Do you want to spend the ninety five hundred dollars to get this done? At least get the plans drawn so they can get pricing board?
Well, I think it's worth the money.
Okay, anyone else?
I agree. I agree also. I think it's worth the money to have. As much, you know. In speaking, I'm on the security committee for Anna Reynolds here. I talked to Mike and all those guys, so they originally asked me to kind of. Present this up forward and some other things like the lighting. So I'm definitely in favor of this. I think that anything we can do to protect the kids. In an elevated state like we have right now is good.
Okay, and Dave or Kim, you wanna?
Well, I agree. I think it's, I would certainly support the plan.
Okay.
I have no problem with it either. I think it's important.
Okay, then I entertain a motion that we accept KVA's proposal for ninety five hundred dollars. To do the drawings for this. New entry, new, I guess it would be entry, new entry in, back into the media center. Any amount of ninety five hundred dollars. Thank you, Kim. And a second? I see Lou. So Kim made it, and Carol seconded it.
By, excuse me for jumping in, but would it be possible for the committee first? At the start here, to increase it a thousand dollars in anticipation, we might need the, it just some level of additional services for. The submittal review and possibly minor. Support besides that in the field.
Any problems with that with the committee? No?
No, I'm, I'm fine with. Making that change to the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
So ten thousand five hundred is then, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Anyone opposed? I don't know. So thank you, everyone. Back to comments by members. I guess you're not done yet, Jennifer.
That, well, you. Oh, ten thousand five hundred, yes. Increased by one thousand. So when I do that, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, it might not be enough and it isn't.
No, I know. It, it's probably going to be fine. I imagine we're not going to get a whole lot of submittals. So, but I'm just going to, to indicate that it's ten thousand five hundred and that it will include like five hours of. Construction contract administration. Anything beyond that, we will do our hourly rates, because that's generally in line with our hourly rates, okay? Thank you.
Anybody got anything else? A lot of motion to adjourn. Anyone?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Carol. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We stand adjourned at, let's see, five fifty three. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Hey, thank you.
Good night.
Thanks.
Yeah, good night.